Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the July 5th, 2022 meeting. Let's do roll call, please.
Mayor Barrio.
President.
Vice Mayor Herman. President. Councilmember Toscoria. President. Councilmember Moncada. President. Councilmember Scherrato is absent. Staff is present.
Let's do number two, Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in his soul, with liberty and justice for all. Next would be number three, Approval of the Agenda as Posted or Amended. If they want to amend or do anything to the agenda. If not, I will look for a motion to approve.
I have your message, so I'll make the motion. I'll take it.
First, second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed, same sign. Next, we move on to public comment. The public may address the council on any items of public if not otherwise on the agenda. That is, in the jurisdiction of the city, no action may be taken. Matters to be addressed may be referred to city staff or placed on the subsequent meeting agenda. Speakers are limited to five members per person. Anybody with public comment at the moment? Okay, seeing and hearing, if there's anybody online. How about you thinking about that? Next, we move on to item number five, Consent Agenda. Does any member of the staff, council, public that would like to pull any item on the consent agenda?
I just have a quick question on one item. I don't know if I have to pull that up. It's fine.
Go once, go twice.
Yep.
Okay, I would look for a motion to approve item number five, Consent Agenda A through G.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second the motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed, same sign. Next, we move on to number six, Regular Agenda. Item A is Public Hearing. Ordinance 527, waive the first reading, hold the public hearing, consent July 19th, 2022, for a second public hearing. Adding the City of Angels Municipal Code Section 9.01, incorporating police acquisition and use of military equipment in accordance with state law, Mr. Chief Pelus.
So I'll try to make this pretty brief. Basically, in 2021, they passed Assembly Bill 481 that requires us to report documents and have a city ordinance and a Department of Policy identifying our rules and regs around the acquisition of military use equipment. Take that military use equipment very broadly because there's a lot of things in it that, like such pepper balls, beanbag, less lethal munitions and stuff like that is considered military use equipment. So those things are also included. I put together our policy, so it's been in draft mode for a while. We had to have it on the website for 30 days. So it's been on the website for 30 days. And we also had an ordinance passed just kind of describing our rules and the guidelines for that equipment, how we acquire that equipment. Things that aren't on our current list that we want to acquire need council approval. So I would have to come back to council and say, I want to get this piece of equipment. This is why council would have to approve it. Within the policy, at the back of the policy, the attachment is the items that we currently have. And most of it is, you know, just less lethal munitions, such as beanbags. And we have some 40-millimeter launchers that can do like OC gas and beam like soft baton rounds. Nothing lethal. No, we don't have any armored vehicles. Had we have had like drones and stuff, that would be part of that as well. We currently don't have a drone program, so those items are on there. There is a full list, I believe, in here of somewhere of all the items in the policy under military equipment. It basically says all the items that are what they consider military equipment, 709.1.1 under military equipment. It says TASER, but those are the TASER shockwave, which was a thing from the probably early 2000s that you laid out on the ground for a crowd riot thing. They would shoot like 100 TASERS probes in a crowd or whatever for riot situations. I don't think they ever took off, but there must be some agencies that have them because they listed them. But there's nothing in there really of much note. We don't need an armored vehicle. We don't need an MRAP, anything like that. So the list of items are attached. And if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer. We have to report annually, publicly, all of this all over again, basically, to just taking, making a list of all the equipment that we have and currently have. We acquire, like I said, if we acquire anything, I have to get council approval. There are emergency situations where I could call the SO and say, I need this now, and they'll bring it now. But then I later have to come back to council and explain why I did that and justify the reasoning for it. But I don't think that's going to, I can't imagine it's happening. They're bringing it, they're using it under their policies, their rules, that kind of stuff. If you had something like that, it wouldn't become ours. Yeah, they would definitely take it back. They wouldn't give it to us.
Council questions, staff questions?
Does this involve additional training, whatever it is that you're wanting to acquire?
The only additional training is it requires less lethal munitions instructor training. And I think we partially have it with one of our employees. But you have to be less lethal instructor certified, meaning for like the beanbag shotguns and the launchers and things like that. So there is a course of fire that they have to receive a certificate for. But that's the only, that's the only thing as far as the equipment we currently have. And this is just a request to adopt the ordinance as is, which is written in there. And then, go forward with question, policy, objects, and staff.
This is actually to waive the first reading, come back to the second reading, and it's currently being published in the paper as well.
So now we've received staff report, we got a chance to ask questions. Then we now open the public hearing. If there's anybody from the public that would like to come on up for or against or anything with it. Now, come on up. Anybody on line? I heard a noise just right now. Okay. I will then close the public hearing. And there's nothing we have to do at the moment because this will be now set for July 19th, 2022. Item B, Approval Resolution 22-28 fiscal year 2022-23, final budget, Rebecca Cowan, City of New York.
So pretty much everything is the same except for the list of changes that I identified on page two. We received last close budget and it was about $2,400 higher than waivers had in. We had to make a correction on the Brad Hart reimbursement for the school pre-grad officer because we're starting to pay for the school term. So we could have a 60% discount. We included the $6,500 for ACBA donations slash waivers. And also, just so you know, Caroline Scherrato and also Martin Havery are also willing to help them. Specifically, the CBD is willing to help ACBA cover the waiver costs as well. The website, I've been working with various website developers and I received quotes to tell them it's a website and get a new one up there so it can actually work. It's about $2,000 more than what I had originally had in the budget. Also, we received, they're offering some additional insurance coverage for impersonation fraud. We weren't prior covered for that. I do recommend that we have coverage for that because it happens more than you would know or could believe. And then, there was just an error on the calculation sheet for the annual TLC replacement project. She was on the backup schedule, but it didn't go forward to the primary schedule. So that was just added to the 25. And I reduced the, there was a duplicate COVID factuary report for $2,500. So I removed that. So both of those changes specifically had to do with the general fund outside of the TLC replacement project, which has to do with water and wastewater. And everything else is the same as what we discussed in the public hearing.
Any questions from staff or council?
I have a question. What is impersonation fraud exactly?
So if someone said, if someone used your email and impersonated you to get money out of someone else, which has happened not necessarily here, but happened in other agencies that I was working at. So it does protect the agency for when someone is impersonating employee for any charges to that next customer.
So the $7,500 covers?
The insurance covers.
Yeah, for the, anyway.
Every time.
It works, where we say police officers. Curry, Schedo, and all of the, yeah.
Does it cover like if somebody calls and hooks up water service? That's, like impersonating that?
No, it would be specifically for like if someone hacks.
If someone would try and impersonate one of, an employee.
Staff, okay.
Like if they say you've been in a closet yet, we need to find someone to.
Yeah, wire.
Right, yeah.
So they're hacking into your email, representing themselves as you. That person thinks they're talking to you. They hate that person, not you.
At least you get those emails.
Yeah.
Anybody else have questions? Okay, I will open up the public. Is there any public comment on item B at the moment? Ms. Rose, online? And I will look at the current approval then of Resolution 2228 fiscal year.
I will make the motion.
I'll second the motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed, same sign. Okay, next, we move on to discussion. Item C, Discussion and Direction of Suspension of Water and Wastewater Charges. Rebecca, here.
Okay, so this has to do with the current water policy. We don't have anything for wastewater. It's just specifically for water. And so, a suspension in terms of what the policy says is, I'm a customer, I can call the city and I can say, I would like you to turn off my water and block toward the main project however long because I'm on vacation or I have tenants that moved out or I'm remodeling, like whatever. There are reasons we get lots of different reasons why someone wants to do that. And that has been allowed under city ordinance, which was adopted in 1985. The problem with it is that base rate is for entire infrastructure, regardless of whether someone's using it or not using it. The use of that, the use of charges has to do with when consumption, right? And the base rate specifically on sewer is there for the same reason. It's based on the entire infrastructure. That's the most expensive part of our entire system. It's irrelevant whether someone is in the house or living there or not. So it's not common practice that I can find anywhere or anywhere. I'm not aware of any other waterway or utility that allows for suspension unless there is a, you know, like a, like what I'm recommending, which is the structure is untouchable. It's basically that it's connected to the structure altogether because it works down or whatever the purpose of it is. So this would require that we would have to amend the ordinance. Or that that basically covers many, many facets of water services. It doesn't have anything to do with wastewater. That is something that I'm working on, which is actually going forward entire policies regarding water and wastewater. But at this point, the city only has policies associated with water. So it's not uncommon to continue to charge the base rate regardless of whether it's occupant or not. I contacted all of our local agencies within the county and none of them allow it. None of them allow you to stop. You can turn off your water if you want to. You're just going to continue to get that base charge.
Do you know what the typical base charge is? I'm just curious. Or when you made all those phone calls compared to other units' values and they have, they're all over the place, what a base charge might be?
Sam Dreis of 98.66, whether you're in the world or not.
With zero consumption? Never go below 98?
CWD is five monthly, so 200 and plus.
Never below 200?
Was it five?
Five, five months.
Oh.
Like 125 months.
I always think that that means twice enough. That means every.
No, every other. And so, you know, there are several things. So what staff have been allowing to happen, regardless of what the policy says, is they've actually been allowing suspension of purpose charges for both water and water, even though the policy only ever interrupts water, never sewer. And sewer is the more expensive, cheapest charge that we have. And it really stemmed from the fact that landlords or property owners who had changes in tenants or there was vacancies of remodeling for the property owners who were going on extended vacations. So in both of those cases, staff were allowing suspensions for under 30 days, which our policy says if you're in suspense, it's water only, and it has to be for no less than 30 days. And they've been doing it with water and with sewer. And then in addition, staff were charging the fee to have staff go out for this one next. And they weren't charging the fee to go out and have it turned back on. And so the current fees for each one of those were $8. So with that said, you know, I put with currently in the Services Management Fund Ordinance on the next page. And if council directs staff to move forward, we would have to do same as we just did with ordinance, a notification of publication of the change. And then we'd bring it back to council for the first and the second reading. And ultimately, we would amend ordinance 273. If you choose not to make this recommendation and you just say, we want to keep you in the public play, that would mean only water charges can be suspended, a disconnection fee of $38 can be charged, a reconnection fee would be charged, and this suspension would be no longer 30 days. And you cannot use rate revenue to offset that way we're charged. So we would have to, we would have to take general funds.
For the missing money.
For the missing money.
Forever, how long it's suspended for?
However long it's suspended for. Because the rate schedule itself is dependent on all of the connected customers paying into the system. That's how the base rate is developed. So if you're not collecting from everybody who's in the system, then the rest of the rate payers are subsidizing that rate payer or both rate payers.
Is that correct?
Growth difference. So they buy in for capacity and then they're paying that monthly rate.
And then those are part of?
And then those are part of their picture. Yep.
And remaining.
So questioning down count. So these buildings that have been vacant and empty, do they have water and sewer bills being charged to them?
Some of them do and some don't.
Because that might be incentive if they start getting $200 bills to get their building rented or something. So, yeah. And that's, you know, 50% of that.
So we've got issues where either a household or rental property is not actually getting built. So number one, we have to start selling them. So really, it's direction from council in terms of which direction we want to go. Regardless, you know, if you say, keep it the way it is, at the very least, everyone's going to be getting sewer bill. Very little story. We have no policy in place to stop charging for sewer. Their current policy only covers water. And if we're going to do water, then we would have to identify everybody who currently isn't paying water and have to bring back an amendment to the budget because we'd have to pull money out of the general funds to basically pay back the bill with water.
Okay, so I got a question. Everybody good with the red? So how many people a year disconnect? Is it like 5, 2, 25?
Oh, yeah.
Do you have a list of who's disconnected right now?
It just happens all the time. Anytime we have 20 plus, that's our command.
And it's 30 days, right?
No, less than.
No, less than, minimum. So they can go six months.
But it sounds like what you were saying is there were some people in their dream for two years.
Some were being suited for two years. Some would be it for three months.
Right.
Some would do it for six months. Some would, it just was all of them.
And it was water and sewer?
Water and.
And that can be no longer, has to just be?
There's no ordinance for sewer.
There's no ordinance.
So sewer.
So either, my recommendation is the whole thing goes. And instead, if you go to what everybody else does, which is no suspension of any kind. You can turn your water if you want. Every property is supposed to have your own water. If you want to turn it off. So there's our affordability or something, that's fine. But in terms of suspending charges, that is not a first rule, that's not a first step.
Okay, and you're recommending that if we do bring it back, we will then determine what those rates would be?
No, the rates, that's the rate. Their rates are the rate.
A base rate is a base rate for speeding. It keeps going up over the next.
It depends on are they five days? Are they one inch? Are they one and a half inch meter? It depends on what their current orders are.
We all pay the base rate, maybe. And then if you see the above and beyond.
I thought there would be like you could disconnect and still have a lesser base rate, lesser than the base.
Your lesser is like you're not paying for consumption?
You're not, you're not, you're not. Okay, I understand.
So I think my biggest thing of this is letting people know about this because I know that we have our meetings and we publish things, but I don't feel like people are likely to factor in or pay that much attention. So I really just want to make sure that we're writing this home, whether it be in their water bill, on our Facebook page, our press release, newsletter, like multiple avenues because I think too many times we do things and people say, oh, I have no clue. And I just want to make sure that whatever we do, people know that I, and I think that will save staff.
Yeah. So the good news is we have to run it in paper. We know who's currently suspended. So we can send out an actual letter to all of them.
Not stuck in their water bill.
Not stuck in their water bill. And that, and we're also publishing it in the newspaper for everybody. And we have to do that by.
So first and a second reading, we have to do that.
So everybody who would be impacted would know.
So what's going to happen in a situation where you have a landlord and a tenant? Tenant disconnects.
Tenant can't disconnect.
Can't anymore.
And so this is the other mess. Now, property owners don't, they forget that it's their water and sewer. It's not the tenant's water and sewer. That water and sewer goes with the property. It's whoever the owner is.
That's what we just did. We just did with the state, it's a man name.
Okay, so that the name would affect them only?
It is the property owner. And so what has been happening also through time is that the landlord would want the bill put in the tenant's name. So the tenant would get the bill, which you can do that. You just have to sign off on it, the owner. And they forget. So then when the tenant stops paying or the tenant leaves, then the owner's frustrated because now they have a delinquent charge that they're responsible for. It's always the owner's responsibility. So if the tenant, you know, doesn't pay the bill, you're still responsible for that bill. Very little story. And tenants cannot unturn off the water.
But there's no incentive for that tenant to cancel it when they leave and give 30 days notice like they're moving on to another home because they have no skin in the game.
Right, because they do not collect the deposit from the tenant when they do all the authorization.
But in their name.
No, because it's still, it's still the property owner's responsibility.
Right, so, because I called CPUD and Toall County and they told me that they will do an authorization form if the property owner is allowing the tenant to do that. But I think it was Toall me, I just positive. They sent me the, the fact. And they also said, have they notified the property owner? When the tenant hasn't paid, are they doing that or not?
We are doing that now.
If they're at any time during.
And it wasn't so much of an issue.
Well, it was something to, yeah.
So pre-COVID, still, I mean, not non-penetrating, your water would be turned off. COVID, pre-COVID. When COVID happened, you've got a two-year window that we legally could not shut water off. And landlords could not legally infect their tenants.
But we weren't notifying them that people weren't paying?
We were not necessarily notifying the property owner that the tenant hadn't been paid because we didn't have. So what was happening is when the owner came in and say, I want my tenant on the bill, they didn't keep themselves on the bill. They just kind of stepped aside and let the tenant just be on the bill. So what staff are doing now is they're keeping the owner on the bill and the tenant also.
I think that's important because.
Like CPUD and SASD, you cannot put any tenant's name on those bills. You as the landowner or the, you are, I pay out the water bill, all the sewer bill. I cannot switch into anyone else's name. It doesn't even matter. So in a situation like that, you just include the water and the sewer in the rent. And that's what we try to recommend. Whole jobs included in the rent. Jobs included in the rent.
Because it's just a headache.
It is a headache.
And they don't pay the bill. And it's really not between us and the tenant. It is between the property owner and the tenant. Even if the tenant left the property owner with $300 bill. And I don't know that you can go after them unless you really didn't solve, like, just not. We can't, so we go after the tenant. So this is where that whole SB 989 is going to look like. So if the tenant came to us and said, the property owner, I've been giving my money as part of the rent to the property owner and they're not paying. The tenant has the right to be the own customer. And when that happens, then we would collect the deposit. We would make the tenant the actual customer. And that's it. So if the tenant at that point doesn't pay their bill and it exceeds the amount of the deposit, we have no recourse because we can't put that name on the property. And the only thing we can do is go to water, which has almost zero chance of getting resolved. So if there's a tenant with water in their name, they don't pay it, they have a $300 bill, they moved to a different place, the owner said, oh, go get your own water bill, and they have a delinquency, we don't give them water, right? So the current policy says if you were going to tenant, because again, property owner is responsible. So property, so let's say a property owner owns two properties.
Right.
This property has a delinquent charge on it because the tenant didn't pay their bill and moved out. And then the property owner wants to set up service on a new property. We don't let them until this company takes care of it. What about the tenant? We don't have any real tenant.
But letting the tenant sign on to a new.
Only because the property owner.
Is in good standing.
The property owner can't be the one paying.
Yeah, that's a mess.
So my recommendation is.
Include it in your rent.
Yeah, include it in your rent and don't ask suspension. So by allowing suspensions, we are the only utility agent in county, pretty much in the tri-county area that I'm aware of and even beyond that, that allows suspension charges. No one else. No one else allows suspended reporting back. Unless your house burned down and it's been disconnected from the infrastructure of the building. So, um, and this is, so this would be the new language associated with the suspension of privileges. Just trying to be understanding of the fact that things happen. And so, um, you know, you have a, you fire, a rent fire, a campfire, and everybody's home burnt down, not even connected to the infrastructure anymore. If that's a topic as well at that point, because you're literally charging a base rate and they're not even connected anymore.
Yeah, that was a case that we didn't tell slid off and was like, yes, they suspended it. Other than that.
Well, I'll make a mention.
Hold on. I have a public, you can't, you're jumping the gun.
Sorry.
Is there any public comment at this moment?
I have a comment.
Come on.
Okay. My name is Olga Mukara. And I know you guys putting those things together. I'm, I'm happy for you guys that you guys do that. But I seems like what I hear is only in your favor and not in the community's favor. What I wanted is that you guys think in us. We live in Anjos Camp. Anjos Camp is a poor town. And you guys get, you guys been here forever. I mean, you guys been generation by generation. We're not Morfies. The Morfies come from the Bay Area. With everybody have a good income, we don't. We poor people in Anjos Camp. Why you think is a lot of the downtown is empty because they cannot afford to pay the rent? Well, my suggestion for you guys is to think in us. You guys think in security, the city. And you guys been elected from that community. That means you guys need a favor of us. She's working for us, okay? Well, and June seventeen, I received a call from two offices saying the, um, I am responsible, like you were saying, uh, for the water. Okay, I have a friend, they have a houses in here and houses in Morfies. She lives in the Bay Area. Uh, not too long ago, uh, you guys allow that renter get away with, uh, twelve hundred, uh, twelve months of not paying water. When these people move, that the owner of the property has to pay, uh, was two thousand, a hundred and something dollars. Because you said, oh, we cannot open the water because, um, the person that was here never paid their, uh, water. You guys should send a, a notice to these people saying this, um, tenant is not paying, but you guys didn't.
And we are doing that now. And so, and we also went after over two hundred thousand dollars in grants to help bail out tenants and property owners that didn't pay their bills for the last few years.
Um, that was very check for me, all this information. I called different towns and I, well, like you says, Morfies. But in Morfies, if that tenant, um, don't pay in a month, they, the owner give notification. That way, um, everybody is, okay? Um, in, in Sonora, it's a big city. Sonora is bigger than us. Um, what I, what I, my suggestion is to, um, think in us, okay? Think in the community. That we not reaching here in Anjos Camp. Um, what I'm saying, but, I mean, most of the time is what I was going to tell you guys. The, um, I mean, it seems like you're working on those situations and that's good. Congratulations. Um, but, um, and then what we're going to do, we, if we want, if the tenant is, is gone for two, three months, we responsible to pay those three months? The whole thing? Uh, because when I talk, I was talking with somebody in the office and I just.
You still have two minutes. You still have two minutes.
Oh.
It's never time like that before.
I said, what did I do?
He made us really mad.
I know that. I just, I will say, another thing, yes, information, please. Because I was throwing chat when they called me and I says, I never knew nothing. You guys should put it in the newspaper, uh, send us a letter or send us a email. I mean, whatever, something that we know what is going on. Um, uh, another thing, the, the lady, I don't remember who was it, they was talking to me, uh, says, I pay in my house. At, at last month, I pay a hundred and fifty-one a month of water and sewer. And she told me they was going to reduce something. It was like a seven dollar reduce. Is that's going to happen if nobody lives in the house?
Whatever the base rate.
It's whatever the consumption is. So consumption would be if you're not using water, then you're not getting charged for.
She told me there was ninety-one for one thing. Ninety, oh, ninety-one for one and fifty-three for another one. It's a hundred and forty-four. That means it's seven dollars different than what I pay and I'm consuming water. I don't think it's that unfair. I think it's, if, if nobody live in the house, you should give us a little low rate.
Is there a base, is there a usage rate, like a base on, you know, you get twenty thousand dollars for the base rate, isn't there?
Is there a little bit of consumption offered for the base? It's no use at all.
Okay, this is my time, right?
Yeah, yeah. As I said, give her one second, because we're still under two minutes or whatever that was.
Give her a minute.
Uh, yeah, give us a little bit break.
Oh, I have.
Um, and, um, give us a little bit break because she says, okay, what happened if I don't pay the water? Because I'm not using the water, I'm not living in the house. And she says, oh, we're going to put a lien on the property. I said, everything I am losing and you guys taking over my, my, my property, my thing. I don't think it's that unfair. If you guys put a lien on a property. Because we citizens, we pay our taxes, property taxes, we pay everything. We honest people, okay? You go, go after those people that don't pay nothing and they run away. Just think about it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other, any other public comment?
Yes, I'm sure. Uh, my name's Bob Debold. Had done the property for twenty years around here. I think this is a city problem and you're dumping it on landlords and I, it is just not fair. Do you expect me to adjust my rent to my tenants based on their water bill every month? Is that what you're asking me to do? I have to see their water bill before I can send them a rent notice?
Generally what people have done is they average whether those tenants be included.
Like I say, if it's your problem and you're done, and why don't you want to have it in the tenant's name? If the tenant moves out, you cut off the water or notify the landlord and they could either extend it or shut it off or whatever. Why, I don't, I don't see why you want to take the burden from the tenant and put it on the landlord.
Because by law, water and sewer are the responsibility, they, they go with the property, not whoever is in the property.
Usage.
No, it's not usage. It, when, when the, when the, when a property originally connects to the system, they pay a capacity fee for the right to connect to that infrastructure. And when they do that, going forward, you're, you're paying for the, the operations and maintenance of the entire infrastructure in addition to replacing and rehabilitating existing infrastructure. That's what the base rate is for.
A lot of people, especially up the hill, or have weekend homes, Anjos campus, not so much. Um, but you're saying that once a, a home is built and they're on the system, you're going to get them forever?
Yes.
No matter what? They're sick, they're dying of cancer in the Bay Area, they can't come up and use the property, they want it shut off, and you won't give them the grace to do that.
And the reason is because water and wastewater infrastructure is extremely expensive and regulated to do. We don't control the state. Federal government controls how we treat water, how we treat wastewater. And it costs millions of dollars every year to do that. And in addition, that infrastructure has to be replaced every so many years. And it's not, you know, a couple thousand dollars, it's tens of millions of dollars. And we have a very small user base. The more we grow in the city, the lower those rates become. The, the smaller we are, the more infrastructure we all individually have to pay for. We have to pay for our share of the infrastructure, which unfortunately is extremely expensive.
You need to build that into your cost. I still don't see how you can pass that on to a landlord.
That's how we built it into the cost, that's the big study, the rates.
Thank you, Bob.
Thank you. Um, so the other thing, just, uh, if there's any other comments that we have done is the city didn't have access to the county's system, to the, um, the property tax system or the recording system. So if a, uh, if a property owner twenty years ago just, you know, had a tenant, knowing like the, the historical record was on in terms of who the property owner was on those properties. So I've gotten access for the city to the two county programs down there by working with our IT department down there. So now we can look at every single property that we have their rent of the tenant account. So that we can push the actual property owner on that and make the tenant a statutory bill. So that we're making sure that we're reaching out to everybody who needs to be reached out to.
I was going to say that, because I feel that we have cleaned things up here in the last few months when we have new rental landlord tenant situations. But going back, I think that we need to do research to figure out.
We're having.
How many landlords have been absent minded because they've had long-term tenants and now if something goes sideways, that's going to be not favorable to that.
And it, and this is the same issue we were having at CPUD, but on a much larger basis. They have over fifteen thousand customers. We don't have that many. So luckily, um, so we have quite a few accounts that have the tenant on them, that's called the property owner, but it's not thousands. So we are able to go back.
So you're just going to see if the name doesn't match up with the property tax name and do a little bit of digging that way?
Yeah, and then do the outreach. And like I said, pre-COVID, it wasn't that, it, you can catch it, right? So someone doesn't pay their bill, you shut the water off, the tenant is going to come, or the landlord is going to come and take care of the bill. COVID did not help anyone's situation because we had no mechanism to turn the water off, none. And then unfortunately, they, the city had no mechanism to figure out who was actually supposed to get billed. For all they knew, it was the property owner, not the tenant. Uh, and then it wasn't until, you know, we were able to then start identifying when we sent out these massive bills after we already credited them thousands of dollars from grant funding that we've gone out. Then we still have a thousand dollar bill sitting there, or an eighteen hundred dollar bill, or a five hundred dollar bill. I think the whole thing was really pointing to be real.
Hold on, let me finish that first. Any other public comment of the month? Like that. Anything online or else? Okay. So at this point, let's bring it back for any discussion.
I was just going to say, I mean, whatever way this goes, it's disappointing because this was adopted in nineteen eighty-five and we're just now finding out about this. And the landlords are just finding out about this. We're naturally disappointed in our creative staff, creative council, all of that, so.
I agree. It's disappointing.
Yeah, it's not a situation.
Um, how can I, like, be hard to do it? Is each individual spot, those waters?
They have, it's within that rate.
Maybe it's a mountain meter, back area.
They only pay if they go over. But, you know, I am concerned about, like, like Mr. Debold mentioned, if, um, if somebody winds up in a nursing home for three or four months going through physical therapy and their house is vacant for that period of time. That's an added burden on an elderly. We have a lot of that in this, in this community. If somebody is a snowbird and they vacation during the winter because it's not favorable to be here when it's cold, they want to shut it off. Is there, would we have to go through a full rate study to identify a lower rate than the RPLC's rate to be like a discontinued?
You have to figure out how, uh, that rate doesn't impact the rest of the rate series.
The rest of the rate, and that would involve a rate study.
Yeah. And the problem is, uh, how, you know, I, I still think they're, I still think that they would come back and say, you're going to, you're potentially violating property.
Because of what you established, your rates that you.
Well, how, how do you, how do you differentiate? So Alvin takes the vacations six months a year and you don't.
And you're going to pay your pay.
You're going to pay.
Don't do that.
You're not. Like, you know, there is, that is an issue. So basically, by default, because we're not collecting from him, we need to make everybody in the system their rate a little bit higher. Which means you're subsidizing that. You would be subsidizing out of the rate. So to not do that, we would have to identify those and we would have to pay for them out of a different source.
Right.
Now, we do offer, um, another item that I am going to be bringing back to the council. And in the rate study, there was discussion about the low income rate, um, credit.
They got the CARES Act, wasn't it?
Um, no.
No, wasn't it?
You can just do, but again, just have to come from the, that's the LEAP.
That's a little less.
Um, yeah, so if they're on the, they're on the, you know, heat program, the LEAP program, or they're on disability. Or on a county, you know, county, um, uh, program, they qualify for a low income, uh, credit. Again, those dollars have to come from a general fund source. Um, which again, that's completely up to council. If you, you know, uh, we also work with ATCA. Um, and we work with Resource Connection, we're working with, um, LEAP, uh, program. Also, ATCA is going to be doing that program. All in the name of trying to help people in the community pay for their, um, water and wastewater charges. Those are all income dependent, so you have to be of a low income standpoint, um, that needs to be in the parameters of those programs. But we definitely do identify that we have people in our system that need help. And so we do try to isolate help for them where we can. So we would be limited at the city in terms of us providing a low income subsidy, depending on what the council wants to budget for that. And that would have to come from the general fund. Um, but in terms of if you want to credit anyone because they're involved in vacation or, um, they're, they're, this is an income property and they don't have a tenant in it for three months, um, that's not a low income issue. That is a, that's the cops are doing business. So if you want to credit them or reduce that rate, you have to find another way to source off of that. Well, the problem with that is that you may have the landlord, the owner of the property is not necessarily low income, the tenant is low income. How do you, you can't differentiate that. You, how, depending on how you set up your program, you could have the landlord not be low income, but the tenant is low income. And if that's the case, um, most agencies will go ahead, and as long as it's not included in the rent, will, um, take the tenant proof of low income, um, you know, whether they're on the, whatever.
So for me, I'm going to say no water and sewer rate suspensions. I understand it is going to be very messy for the, for a few months, maybe a year, trying to figure out, going back through county records and figuring out stuff. And COVID did not help us at all because prior to COVID, after a month, you'd shut them off. So the landlord had no, and the tenant had no, within thirty days, the pay, the bill hasn't been paid. With COVID, you've gone two years and the landlord can't get anybody out, we can't turn off water. It's going to make it horribly messy and just the staff are going to have some very upset.
I have a clarification question that was brought up. So we didn't notify people if they didn't pay their rent, or not rent, sorry, their water and drainage.
We notified the tenant. We notified who we have on the bill. So the tenants were proceeding the bill saying, you have a disease and this role of the balance is popping in. And they weren't telling their landlord. What's a little frustrating with that is some of these landlords were actually going out and getting grant funding for, um, rental assistance. Which had they known from the tenant that they weren't paying their water bill, they could have included that in the grant. So a lot of these landlords were still getting rental assistance from COVID relief money. But we were not getting paid on the water and wastewater, like. So when I have, um, you know, landlords or property owners that are frustrated because they have this twelve hundred dollar bill and then they tell me that this whole time they have continued to get rental income.
And there's payment, there's a, there's a payment program. There's a payment program set up, you, you save what you can afford for the next fifteen months. As long as you don't, as long as you don't miss that, you don't get shut off, correct, too?
That's a huge. That's a huge fail on our part for not having that tightened up. I mean, I understand what you're saying, that COVID kind of revealed that, but that's, that's a big fail for us. That's a fail for the community, not knowing who your obligors were, who the people on the hood were. Because they didn't know it was them and we, we, not you or I or anybody in this room, but that's unfortunate. I really think that we need to get a good, good grasp on that and get it sooner than later.
Yeah, so we're on the problem for everybody. Anyone who we've got marked as potential tenant account, we're swapping that out for who is actually on the LEAP or owner account.
And then getting a form of communication with the landlord via mail, emails, something like that.
I actually think too that that's gonna benefit downtown if there's properties that have not been paying rent or water and have been not paying sewer and are just sitting empty because they're not there. Maybe that's a big thing. So I'm, I'm all for it.
Just two for it. What do you guys have?
Good. One other comment?
Yeah, come back up for one. Yeah, well, I can read a public comment for you.
The next time you, at some point, you're gonna have a water bill increase. The next time you start doing that, why don't you build in the slush fund or the city to cover this situation? And then you get everybody else off the hook. It's just clean. You've got the money there. It's already prepaid. I don't mind paying the money, although the increase in the bill, landlord, I'm sure feel the same, you know, feel the same way. Why can't you build that into the system?
So we can, not with water and wastewater rates though. So what we were working on at CCWD was we were actually looking at a program that ratepayers could choose to donate like an extra dollar per month or $2 per month, whatever they wanted to. And that would go into a subsidy account. Because at that point, I'm not forcing you to pay the extra dollar or $2. It's completely up to you and you can do it or not do it. And so the idea was to take that, we won't call it a slush fund, we'll call it an assistance fund, that could be used for situations like this or help fund more low income assistance programs or senior citizen programs or whatever that council wanted to go after. But there's different ways that you can make that happen. You just have to be really careful when you're talking about an actual rate or fee, that it can't go for discretionary things.
I like that. It seems to me that would be a lot cleaner and just workable for everybody. You might have to explain really anything to the community, send out a letter or.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I might be splitting hairs on this question, but how tight does it have to be on a transfer of ownership? I'm selling my house to him. escrow closes on the 15th. My water is shut off. My obligation is shut off.
So we prorate it. So you change through.
But he's not calling you up and activating the water and wastewater under his name yet because he's not gonna move here for three months till the remodel's done.
We don't care. We don't, we don't care. That's why, but that's why we got the action.
No, but.
Right, so when he calls us three months later and you say, guess what?
As soon as I get recorded.
As soon as he gets recorded.
He gets a lot of, how's that gonna work in notification to the new property owner? Because, I mean, she is right.
That's all in the deed, that's not the reported deed. We don't go off, we have an address. Yeah, you have to have a notice where that reported deed is.
The minute I get water hooked up on a bare lot, I start paying for that deed.
The minute you get water hooked up, but I'm saying in this.
There's not even a hose bid. The minute I connect, I start paying.
Which she pays like a thousand.
And it doesn't matter if I don't build a house for two years. I'm still paying $90 a month to have that connection. And that's how, that's how it is. That's how, that's how it is in San Diego. If you have an empty lot for five years, you are paying $90 a month for five years and you don't even consume one drop of water.
So this is why for a CCWD, and I'm sure it happens in the city as well, you can buy a lot, but you will not pay that capacity fee until, this is kind of, this is the game we play. So we're not gonna pay for that capacity fee until we are ready to go. Because the moment you pay that capacity fee, you're paying that base rate regardless. And so a lot of times, especially what we are seeing at CCWD, they would buy that lot and they would, they would do anything they could to try to build as far as they could without paying that capacity fee. Because the moment that happened, they were paying the water and sewer. And it could be another two years before the house is done. And that's very similar to what every single agency is doing. It's the capacity fee buying into the system to her, but.
Okay, what are the directions?
They get part of being an owner of the property.
So you don't have a problem with our resolution that's in place? You just have a problem with how it hasn't been enforced?
No, I have a problem.
The resolution allows disconnects.
The fact that the resolution allows this dysfunction is a problem. Because no other agency allows that happen. And my other problem is that staff were going beyond, like even if, even if you wanted to keep that policy in place, which I don't recommend, they were going beyond that policy and allowing people to do sewer as well.
The current disconnect policy would be $38 each, so that'd be $76 a month.
No, once. You send someone out, you disconnect it, you send someone out again to reconnect.
Gotcha.
So in Tahoe, when you lock your cabin up for the winter, because we can't get to it, you still pay garbage, you still pay water, you still pay sewer. That's just the way that, whether you turn the wire off because you don't want your house to flood, but, yeah.
I feel like there's a happy medium somewhere and we're just not there yet. But I understand that a 218 would be costly to arrive at that happy medium, you know, to re-rate everything, if I'm making sense.
Well, the purest issue I have is if you have a ratepayer who realizes that they're subsidizing and we get sued, it involves a rate buddy.
Oh, I understand.
So here's my question, so are, yeah, I don't know lawyer wise, but if I'm subsidizing you while you shut it off, I don't know if that's.
Right, I go on vacation, yeah.
I don't know if we can do that.
No, we can't.
Can't.
I know, I'm just, yeah. Hypothetically, yeah. Well, I'm not saying we're doing it now. But if I was, that's where it's at, is you can't subsidize, everybody's gotta pay equal.
And that's where I think that this whole thing of actually that the people who have been paying this whole time are, that's the people that are.
But we're changing that.
Yeah.
And you, we're ruined.
I just think that.
Education, communication.
They're getting out there.
I don't want to hear from people later. We never knew about this. So I want to make sure that we're hitting it on all levels to where I can't say, or I can say, you didn't see it here because we posted it here, 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 we did this, we did that. Whether we do a workshop of some sort to make sure that it's very clearly known as to since what this policy was, unfortunately, it wasn't being handled that way.
Rather than using the, we can put a lien on your house language, maybe offering an ease into this payment structure. This has never been enforced.
But we can talk about that.
I know, that's different.
Yeah, you have actually, we're already done.
We have to do it. I know we have to do it. I just think that it needs to be done right and I think it needs to be thorough and.
Well, I think we should not allow it to don't then. We should say in the owner's name and the owners need to add an extra $200 or whatever to the rent and include water, sewer, and garbage. And then we don't have that problem.
Well, whatever is that throughout that we go, then yeah, we need to clean those up and make sure.
Because that's, I mean, like, that's what I.
One way, other people is another. It's a cross stream, unfortunately.
My understanding when I got into rentals was that it was illegal for you to not include water, sewer, and garbage in the price of your rent because you were liable for that. So my understanding from dealing with rentals for 15 years was water, sewer, and garbage are included and that is my responsibility. Your rent is $1,200. That's included with these items. And you get your own cable, you get your own PG&E, you get your own groceries, but it does. And so then it just cleans it up because then the landlord knows some months your water bill's $100, some months your water bill's $40. It just depends on the state fund, but it all kind of balances. It is the state funds.
And you'll say, you find a way, A L S P, state of located.
So the other, the other utility district companies that don't allow tenants to put them in their name in actually the direction that we should build, we might, because it's just cleaner. You don't have that, you're not having constant turnover. It's just like, you know, having, yeah.
It's gonna be very administratively burdensome.
Yeah.
The nicer to try to do that. And especially you'll have properties that have tenant turnover every six or eight years. And it's every single time that happens, we have to help. I'm okay with that.
All right, you got directions from three. You're the last one.
Yes, Bill. I mean, you guys are majority, so I figured we know what we had on this.
Okay. Onto item D. Approval of Resolution 22-31, delinquent collections for water and wastewater services and fees for beckoning.
Okay, so I'm not sure why this city has never done this. I think for whatever reason, you guys like discharging 15 to 16,000 dollars a year instead.
I'm sorry, don't say you guys because I don't think they were made to work that. And I have known this, I would not be okay, right?
I have like wasted money, period. So.
So I hate discharging and collections just is not like normal collections, that's a lot. So when you go through a collections agency, the, number one, they're gonna charge you 50% if they can get anything. And it's like getting blood from a rat. Ultimately, water and wastewater charges are the responsibility of the property owner. So we have instances right now, and this has been going on for years, where we will have a property owner, they don't have water, but they have sewer. We can't shut sewer off. So they have like a well and they have our sewer. We can't shut their water off because of the well. They technically don't have to pay their bill because we can't shut them off. And then each year it's going to collections and it never gets collected. And then if they sell the property, it basically just gets discharged, there's nothing we can do. So what agencies can do that are utility agencies, like us ourselves, is we actually can put the delinquent charges on the property, just like in our water parks. You can do this with code compliance, charges, cleanup. You can't do it for me, it's a felony, you're really compliant. But if you actually went out and cleaned up a property and all the charges associated with that, you can't really do that for the same way. But it's a lien on the property. So once a year, you can give the list of delinquent charges to the county and the county will put them on the tax roll and then they will be collected, just like our building number one. And then your county gives, whatever agency, us or whoever, you just get the money regardless of whether they paid or not. In return, the county gets all the penalty and interest after the time that they're paid. That's where they get their, that's the, that's where it comes. So this plan, it's called the TETER plan, went into effect in the 93, 94, 95 year by the water controller with my friends, that's the county. And it helped stabilize property tax distribution for all the tax and jurisdictions in the county. And then it also gave the ability to put additional delinquent charges such as water, wastewater, you could actually do garbage, and code compliance. So we haven't participated in this. It is 100% recoverable so long as the property has been recovered. So if we had a property that had $1,000 in delinquent charges, but that property owner sold the property to someone else, that $1,000 is gone. All we can do is send it to collections and hope someone pays it, maybe probably not. And then we end up sending it back to council and we'll just shut it. But so long as that property has not transferred ownership, it stays with the property and then it's likely to happen. Would happen. So the city has not been doing that this whole time. And there are some things just to be considered. The liens can only be given once per year and it would be delinquent charges through June of any year. Anytime there's a sale, transfer, can't place it as a lien. And any properties that enter into a payment plan for that, that's in 998, they can't be put on the tax roll because they're making the, they're entering into a agreement to actually pay it off. And so therefore, we can't do that. So the recommendation would be to follow this model. Again, we're in this kind of safety situation, muddy waters, where we've had a two-year period where property owners, it's not that all property owners were not notified that their property is for the length of it. It's just some of them rented the properties out. They may not have been notified. So they're getting notified now and they're not really happy because they've got a $500 or $1,000 or $1,700 bill that their tenant wrapped up. So my recommendation of what we've been doing so far is we've just been working with those respective property owners to do a payment plan, even though they technically don't qualify for a low income payment plan, but we're trying to work with them. So as long as they're making progress on paying back, that is, we're fine. But we do have a lot of properties where the property owners were aware and we haven't paid. We've done everything we possibly can to lower that amount by going after state grants, by pushing those property owners, if they were low income, to ATCA or to LEWOP or whatever programs we possibly could to try to get that dollar amount down. But we still have over $100,000 in delinquent charges between water and wastewater. And if we want to guarantee collection, it would be to me and the property.
Or do our, I mean, why are we going to consider the county in this TETER project?
Because only the county can collect property.
And at what point does the county force a, do the sale on the warehouse set?
Five years.
So five years of that lien being on there before it goes into options?
If they, if the property owner, it means no effort to pay it, yeah. And then the tax liens are also allowed for payment. So you can enter into a payment plan if you have a large, small.
These directions, this is more normal for me. This is the number.
I mean, much better than going to a collection agency.
Yeah. No other questions? Staff, anybody? Okay, we will open up public comment on item D. Anybody online? Okay, I'll bring it back and look for approval of Resolution 22-31.
Sorry, a quick question. So are we gonna do something COVID outreach on this?
Yeah, so the first thing we have to do is we have to go look at all properties, make sure all of the delinquent accounts are whoed and said. We also have to determine if there was any change of ownership in the year, the period of time that we're looking at. Once that happens, that lettered out, every single property owner letting them know to give them an opportunity to come in and pay it. We'll give them an opportunity to enter into some sort of a payment plan with us. And then if we hear nothing back from them or if they just, they don't want to, I don't know, that we would just push it forward and we would put it out.
How many of these are in total? 10, 20, 100, 200?
Over 100.
Over 100. So this is gonna take a couple months to massage and get it cleaned up?
No, well, it'll take a while.
Let me say hello.
Um, and then what I would say is, um, for the ones that we will enter into payment plans on, um, especially for more dollar amounts, we probably will go have them self-file, um, both title lien, let them plow it just to make sure because if they try to sell that property, um, while they're in the process of making progress or they stop, they, they stop paying or whatever, uh, then we've kind of limited our ability to recover. So the only way we can recover at that point is if we file a title. So that if they do sell it, then it gets pulled over part of the.
Or a manual.
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree with that. Well, need for us.
I have a second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye. Aye, anybody opposed, same sign? Item D, approval of employment agreement to Brett Callen, who's in this Rose probably.
Yeah.
Yep.
Tell us about it, Russ.
Hey, is there anything?
The changes are for the essential pay, the VAC pay along with paying fees. Her salary will start at a hundred and thirty-six, one thirty-six per year. Um, pretty much brings her in line with the rest of the employees as far as the MAU's where we, um, receive the essential pay and the VAC pay. She did receive a satisfactory review, uh, and this is what we've come to agree upon.
Any questions for Rose, any staff questions, any public comment? Anybody online? Close public comment? And we have the vote on this? Yes, we do. Yeah.
Do you need a motion and a second, first, and then?
Yes, motion and second. It's not a resolution.
It's not a resolution, okay.
I will make the motion.
I will second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed, same sign? Item F, discussion award contract to Dewberry Engineering Team for engineering service for a term of July sixth, twenty-twenty-two through June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-five, Rebecca, you're.
Uh, okay, so we originally had a contract with Greg Hadlin and that R, we went out in twenty-eighteen. The city contracted with them in early twenty-nineteen. And it was for a one-year contract with an option for two additional years. The issue, um, is that how that contract was written had a very low dollar amount. So it wasn't that the, the years were a problem, like the length of the contract and you could continue to extend it for so many years. It was the dollar amount, it was a, it was a very low not to exceed amount. And we have a lot of federal and state projects that are going on that were constantly pushing on that threshold. So the contract kept having amendments and chain orders brought back to council, which council, I mean, all that's fine, but for federal, uh, reimbursable projects, you can't keep doing that, you can't keep adjusting the term of the contract as far as the dollar or the length. And so we were starting to get out of compliance with federal procurement requirements, which was going to risk funding on any of the federal projects that were being, which is quite a few of our problems right now. So the recommendation was to actually go out and declare it recently. Basically, we needed to do a request for qualification, do that bidding process, see what we got, and then go from there. So, um, I based the contract on the local assistance, um, requirements for Caltrans and for federal procurement requirements. Um, we received one proposal from Dewberry Engineers with Greg Hadlin and Dewberry are now the same. So, uh, so the good news is Dewberry has been working very closely with us on several water and wastewater projects as well as several transportation projects. So it is nice to continue with that relationship because they have extensive knowledge on those particular projects. Um, but we, uh, yeah, so what we did is instead of defining very specifically what all of the tasks were going to be as part of the contract, we did a very large not to exceed amount of five million dollars is what the recommendation is, and do a multi-year, three-year with an option to extend for an additional two-year contract. And what we will do is for each of the elements that we have an engineering need for, we will actually create a task order for those. So right now, the budget includes a budget for water engineering, just operational water engineering, a budget for wastewater engineering, and a budget for general engineering. So we would do a task order for this, for this fiscal year with each one of those. In addition, as projects come up or that we need to do an additional, um, project or we have additional tasks that we need to address, those would be brought back to council as a task order to approve along with the budget to identify the funding for it, the task order. And so overall, the theory is we may never get to put five million dollar not to exceed amount, but it's large enough so that if we ever did run into something like that, we wouldn't have a federal procurement issue. Um, I did look at the last three-year period in terms of the payments that we need to Greg Hadlin and to Dewberry. I think for a three-year period, I think it was like two point seven. So we're not completely out of the ballpark on that one. Um, and then with the consideration that we have habitat of humanity, we have the water treatment plant, we have the wastewater project, long sister way of East Front, all of that, we're gonna be doing a lot of engineering work. Um, and then we have, um, you know, they, they gave us who our main contacts are going to be. Um, we'll continue with Matt Sataw for transportation, Dave Richard for water and wastewater. Um, and we will get, oh, what is his name? Aaron Rizori, thank you. Yes, uh, will be the city engineer. So he is actually a sub, uh, from an engineering firm called REY Engineers. And in addition to REY, Dewberry is also doing a subcontract with Unico. So we thought a pretty good, um, group that if we needed to get additional construction management or, um, you know, inspections or anything like that, it's not limited just to Dewberry, to New York, to REY, and Unico.
Any questions for staff?
I have some questions. Um, we had a lot of interest on this, this was out for like three weeks, right, or more?
We had a lot of interest.
A lot of like.
Like a lot of curious.
People viewing it, downloading it, and one proposal.
Yep. I think what scares people off is the, um, the draft contract because it's twenty-nine days long and it specifically has to do with local liquidity requirements and that's a real federal issue.
That's not gonna scare anyone, I guess, guys off, they're all familiar with.
We have, um, issues where they wanted to respond, like, could they respond just like for non-federal stuff?
Yeah, no, no, we have to be, if the funding's coming in federally, we have to be aligned out to procure federally. Um, that's, I, it's, I'm kind of blown away on that. Did you, did you reach out by looking and asking, and that, that's what they said, was because of we were too federal or too many?
The, the, the smaller firms, yes, they're, they're just, they don't have.
But Unico themselves didn't propose, or REY?
But it's entirely possible that Unico knew it.
They were gonna be a seller.
Because there was gonna be a seller, and entirely possible that REY.
And it's somewhat disappointing that we didn't have any local interest from any local.
No, and I did, I did reach out to, um, I did reach out to local.
And they, they weren't able to, staff and vice versa.
Yeah, so that was the one respondent that we actually got back.
Um, dang it. I've worked with a lot of these different people and I know them, I know fifty percent of them from other projects. And I would like to see, in a perfect world, like waving a magic wand, I would love to see a different team. But that's my, that's my own personal comment.
I know, I mean, I, I hate to bring up it. Murphy's grave, I didn't hear about it. Um, well, Murphy's grave, we're not here for a while, because you were in. Uh, the, the.
They're all in charge.
They're, they're all, all those issues are being addressed.
We have Rebecca Nealon currently, and it looks like she's still being identified as the grant, um, for us.
The grant assistant.
Grant assistant only, gotta go one way.
Only grant assistant, so she's off to the site. We will deal directly with our contractor, REY. So can you basically figure out what GMAX was doing?
Aaron will.
Yeah.
Our current contract expires hard at the end of the month, at the end of July. Our current Dewberry, it's been extended so many times and it expires July.
It did expire.
It did expire.
Yeah.
And there was no option to do a six-month extension on that or.
A lot of people want to start giving up on all of them.
Right, so you're already done so many sessions.
I know, I know.
So as for me, I, I think Dave is, he knows our water and wastewater like the back of his hand. Matt Sataw handed, handled the, uh, I don't know, call for forty-nine, this direction. Uh, great, I think there's been a hiccup a little bit on the, on the Murphy's grave road, but one, everybody makes mistakes, things mess up. Um, we have insurance, we have different things. I don't, I'm, I like, I, I like, this is the one we got, I'm not super sad about it. So, I don't mind. There's a lot of dollars. What's that? Oh, yeah, there you are.
And, and I would say, um, I am a very much him-on person, so.
Which is good.
We're already doing better.
I like, I like that they brought in the other. Aaron?
Yeah.
Any public comment at the moment? Rose? Okay. And who's that? In discussion and award contract, so we have the.
Awarded contract.
It's awarded contract, so I will make a motion to award the contract to Dewberry Engineering. Is there?
Do we have any other options? If, if we wanna space the projects that we have.
No.
On the board right now, that's the other option.
Do we have to go for a three-year contract? Can we, can we try this team out? I'm just throwing out spitball from this point. Is there any way to try this new team out with you as the penny thumb for less than three years? I mean, obviously, we can get out of this contract too anytime we're dissatisfied. Which, how do you balance that, how do you?
Um, okay, so we have the booster and the East Front. And that, and it's like hitting the ground, starting.
Two of those three years.
Okay, um, we have Habitat, we have Foundry, we have, um, the water treatment plant. We have, um, other sewer projects, and we have several, like, just general CIP. There are pieces of those products that I think would be hard to, like, chug forward and then think that we're gonna like back off and go in a totally different direction.
I will, I'll second it if you are intent with.
Police see him aggressively.
Doesn't come and talk a lot. I don't know if he considers me that or the nag, but.
Right, whatever, what they.
I mean, I think he knows he can't run you over.
It was just a point I would.
It's hugely disappointing, I, it's like you're laying down the double or something, I didn't.
Do we have a motion and a second?
Yep, all in favor? Aye.
I, it can happen, this is all on you.
So four oh one? I did, she's okay.
I can.
Yep. Okay, administration report, admin report?
Um, so the next meeting, we will be, uh, I spoke in doing the first meeting hopefully of the ordinance that we need to start moving forward on for Calrecycle, um, that will be thirteen eighty-three. So we have, once we bring that forward, I'll have a whole staff report for that, but basically we have two years to implement. So, um, they're, they're contacted to have a third. So it, it's several. So we're exempt from a lot of the requirements that that's gonna build except for, uh, grocery stores. And any, then you're, that means more than two hundred and fifty, I think that's what it is. So you think of, you know, camps, if you're doing a big, a guy for, I just got a minor. Well, maybe the outside of us, but yeah. But grocery stores is a big one. So their biggest thing is they're trying to come up with programs to eliminate food waste. And so, um, it's a matter of doing education on the beginning of those that are impacted and then it's gonna be enforcement. So, um, luckily, we don't have any really big restaurants. People thought that would be really painful. Um, so we'll, we'll kind of look at what other agencies are kind of doing right now and, and some of the ideas and outreach programs that they're doing. Um, I would say the biggest ones are gonna be on the grocery stores. The good news is, um, uh, Angel's Food Market also has Sierra Hills, and so they're gonna be getting that for all directions from city and county. So, um, I, I think that they'll kind of come to people and help us figure that out. And then Safe Mart is all over the place, so, and they are in non-mural affected areas. They're already going to be having plans in place and programs in place. So, um, we'll be working with tenants in there as well to just identify how they're gonna facilitate that. A lot of it's gonna be working with Loobank, um, just kind of coordinating that with Loobank or, um, other nonprofits that can utilize the food so that it's not going in garbage.
We've always done, um, we've helped the things about the cleaning ways for people's places that we've always put in. And we, we have farmers that are literally waiting for the next person to step out on it and that's just stuff every day, we send out a pick-up for probably twenty.
Yeah.
And we do that here too, and they feed their kids or whatever. And they feed their kids or whatever, and they love it.
And Power Cycle's been pretty helpful in having different ideas. So that was one of the things, are we talking about just feeding people or can we feed animals too? So you think about chicken, animal feed, there's also goat and everything. So I think that will be kind of the one, like, silver lining that we're gonna have is we might not have a lot of capacity for food, but we do have a lot of ag in the area. So I think that will be that's important to them. And then the other piece has to do with city procurement of paper products. And so all the paper products that all of us at the city buy have to be a certain percentage of recycled or recycled material. And there's not a lot of investment on that, which does need essentially... It's going to increase our paper cost. But on the flip side, I'm trying to get people to use like paper anyway. That'll, it might...
What do you use it for now?
Printing? Paper towels?
Paper, yeah.
Print paper?
Yeah.
And I mean stickers, like...
Signings, like...
No, I know.
But it also includes paper plates, cups, anything. So there are some requirements on that as well. And there's a couple other requirements on it. But we'll be bringing that first reading here shortly along with that report, that reading of how we cost to adopt it. And then there was reporting requirement to the state and for both enforcement. So that is coming. And then we have done some outreach on the rate increases that went into effect on the like first, that people will be on that bill. So that information is available on Facebook. It's in all of our post offices. So we put that on the bills.
How many calls or how many people have required a lot or not so many?
We've had some just because from reading the budget about increases, that they didn't understand where the rate was going to remain.
But Bill just went out with a note on it, right? Those like, probably are in the mailboxes this week?
Yeah. So I think some people just forgot we're in year four of a five-year rate.
That's what the people that I've talked to did. I haven't talked to anyone that had seen the notification. I was curious.
And then we are, we closed the RFP for IT services. We got 13 respondents, and we narrowed it down to five. So we're going to get together internal staff, getting together to review the five that are left to determine who should be recommended to reach forward to the council to contract for IT services. And then we have a lot of capital investment we need to make on the roads, the road maintenance and network.
Okay, we'll move on to item number eight, council reports.
Hi. RDWPA meeting was canceled.
Just in line to have my head, I think Friday. And there's pretty good progress for the life facilities. So it's about time to be, otherwise I haven't heard.
UWAPA for me also was, we're caught up and squared away at the moment. Everything was good, so we took a break last month. And the only thing I have to report, because my wife is there right now, is I made a $5 movie night, $5 Tuesday, any movie, any time at the movie theater right now.
Oh, wow!
Yeah. On Tuesdays, it's $5, any movie, any time, all day long. So go see Jeff, buy some popcorn, it's $5 for any movie. New or old.
How come I didn't see any ads for that?
So...
Oh, that's great.
Well, just trying it out right now.
Perfect.
Should we join her?
Let's go. So that's all I have for council reports. I was out sick and different things going on, but I am back now. And next, we will go to correspondence. We saw that. Was there anything anyone to comment on that? Rose, I assume number 10, you've already emailed our calendar?
Correct.
Look for number 11, motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion. I have a second.
First and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed, same sign?
Thank you. Thank you.
Hold on a second before we leave. There were no minutes on this, right?
No, there weren't.
Okay, good.
I thought this meeting was going to go on. Very...